All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to CTCPA's Town Hall. I'm April DeFalco, CTCPA's Outreach and Engagement Specialist. Just a couple of quick reminders before we dive right into this very hot topic. We will be offering a Q and A portion around 8:45. However, if you do have a question you'd like to ask during the presentation, we ask that you send it to me in the chat and I'll alert the presenters. If you don't have access to chat, use the raise your hand button. And if you don't have access to that, maybe just raise your physical hand and we will get to you in the order that you do. Also, make sure that you respond to the four pop-up polls throughout the hour to receive your CPE credit. And now I'd like to introduce our presenters here today from CLA. That's Clifton Larson Allen. First, we have Jennifer Clement, the Executive Sales and Marketing Leader specializing in value creation for C suites. Currently, Jennifer collaborates and strategizes with global manufacturing and distribution company execs to accelerate their results. Before CLA, Jennifer served as the Global Business Acceleration Leader for Complete Manufacturing and Distribution. During that time, she lived and worked in Asia for four years. Jennifer received her BA and MBA in Finance from Marquette University, graduating magna cum laude. And our next CLA team member is Kyle Dolly. Kyle's an experienced practitioner with a focus on international tax needs of multinational businesses. Boy, that's a, that's a mouthful. Before CLA, Kyle spent time, some time with the big fours, developing strategies and managing complex international business and tax projects. Previously, Kyle even spent over a year helping to run a biotech startup company. And he was tasked with managing their daily operations and their long-term vision. Kyle received his bachelor's degree in Business Admin, majoring in Accounting at the University of North Dakota. Kyle's not only a CPA, but he's also an attorney. So let's get started. Jennifer, you have the room.
Hey, good morning, everybody, and welcome. Gratitude first. April and team, thank you so much for hosting us today. And we really appreciate the opportunity to share a few thoughts on this all-important topic that's consuming headlines, consuming tweets, consuming how we're driving strategy for the next few weeks. And I'm thrilled to have Kyle joining me today as, as a finance leader for our firm. I don't go anywhere unchaperoned, and so it's great to have Kyle with us, who is going to be layering in colorful commentary on the tax side as well, given his international background. As April said, I lived and worked in Asia from 2015 to 2019. And so I lived through the first Trump administration, the first wave of tariff that went in place. I worked with about 100 different clients to figure out how to mitigate their tariff exposure. And as, you know, we, we were faced with that first round. Today's environment is very, very different. And so today, we want to lead you through what we're seeing, how clients are mitigating risk and reducing their exposure in a very volatile tariff environment. So thanks, April, for having us. Really appreciate being here. Also, welcome on this, okay, that's, first poll question came up, very exciting, on this tax, post 4/15 tax day. And I'm so glad you could join us and likewise want to congratulate all of my friends in Connecticut for an amazing, huge win for UConn and the Huskies. That was super fun to watch. So let's dive in and get started. All right. So first disclaimer, what you're about to hear is, are some of the things that we've, we're working with clients about, these aren't meant to be legal advice of any nature or flavor. So, you know, a little bit about the manufacturing environment that we're currently living in. Manufacturing, while if you look at our GDP, it's 70% of our GDP is consumer-related spend. About 10% is manufacturing-related output. And what I found really interesting in listening to a recent trade presentation is about half of that is exported. So the, the, the global nature of our business is, has never been more important as we think about the tariff numbers coming in and also the reciprocal tariffs environment that's, you know, going to be coming at us as well. The purpose of our discussion today, folks, is not to talk about, less about what the numbers are, but more about how can we take very practical steps to mitigate our exposure, spread that risk? Kyle and I are not going to have a silver bullet that's going to say, all right, here's the one solution that's going to help mitigate the most exposure for the tariff. What we're going to share with you today are strategies that we're seeing that will help spread that risk. So it's, and imagine there's, we've got about 20 different techniques that we've, we've, we've seen used at this point. We're going to cover about 10 of those today. So we're going to roll up our sleeves and get very practical with, with how to tackle tariffs. And to start getting our heads around this, and you know, people ask me all the time, how do we bite off one piece of the elephant at a time? Think about it in three buckets. So first of all, there's things that we can do immediately. And I'll call this kind of good tariff accounting hygiene, regardless of what that number is, right? Whether it's 20%, whether it's 120% or 220%, what should we be doing on the accounting side to make sure that we're not paying a nickel more than we have to? Group two is, what can we do in the next 12 to 18 months with our current footprint? So are there strategies and things that we can be thinking about in terms of supply chain and workflow and process that can help us address costs? And then finally, in the third bucket is with, can we reimagine, think about what your board is asking you to do right now is, what can we do to reimagine our supply chain and our, in our footprint in a different way? So this is where we're going to talk about reshoring and nearshoring. So these, these take, you know, months of planning and investment strategy. And so I think as we, you know, we wade into this, what we'll, we'll spend most of our time today doing is really focusing on bucket number one. What can we do right now? So of the 20 or so, we're going to, we're going to quickly sprint through about half. We'll give you some resources at the end so that if you're interested in, hey, I'd like to explore the other 10 as well, we'll give you some resources to do that. Kyle, hop in.
Yeah, no, I think, you know, even the previous side was pretty helpful because I think what businesses are struggling, especially as us, as all of us on this call, you know, we're all trusted business advisors. I know we view ourselves as a tax accountant or auditor, right? But at the end of the day, we want to be trusted business advisors. And, you know, we've just seen a lot of things as, as Jennifer mentioned, right? Like we're, you know, I think sometimes I see organizations so focused on the, the import side and not thinking about the downstream and the sales side exports, right? Like we, we have so many export incentives and, and that, you know, built into the tax code. But there's these countries that are also having, you know, costs on those exports too. So like kind of, when you look at even bucket one, it's not just looking at, you know, the import side. It's the whole value chain for the business and thinking about it holistically and, and pulling the right, you know, some of the businesses, like, you know, all of our clients, it's a, it's a wide, you know, spectrum. You got, you know, the owner's operator is very active, does everything. Then you got some that, you know, are bigger organizations where you got sourcing and then you got the sales function that are completely disconnected at times. And so as a business, as a trusted business advisor, kind of pulling everyone together and, you know, making sure they're looking at everything and, and, you know, there's, obviously, we each have our, our sweet spot, our wheelhouse. But, you know, you gotta pull in a wider team and, and business to really see what's going on. But yeah, that's just some observations I've seen just in the last, you know, few weeks of trying to be a trusted business advisor and looking at the whole, the whole value chain here.
Yep. Yeah, such a great point, Kyle. And we're going to get into that. We're going to get into tactics for accounting and very specific things, five-foot level of, you know, how we can even address at the invoice level. But FPNA folks on the line, your role, mission critical. As we, we need models with dynamic inputs and dynamic outputs right now because there's a whole lot of volatility in the numbers. Let's, let's just touch on that briefly and then let's roll up our sleeves and dive in. So don't want to spend a ton of time here, but you know, you'll, I, I know that you all had probably been on a ton of webinars. And likewise, so have we, trying to learn as much as we can. And what I'm seeing on a lot of webinars is, here's the numbers and here's the impact. And so we're going to, we really want to shift our time today on the practical. But what, regardless of what the numbers are, we're in a 90-day pause period for retaliatory tariffs. This, there's never been a better time to plan. So we've, we've been given this grace period to, and, and it's not, clients are seeing as an opportunity to really get a roadmap together so that we're ready. So that as, as we head back into a more volatile environment, again, we've got these models ready with dynamic inputs and dynamic outputs. So it, for, for many, we're seeing folks saying, hey, I really want to use this time in this pause wisely. Kyle, any further comment?
No, I mean, I've been on calls with the client and, you know, the, the double tariffs on Canada had dropped, you know, while we're talking. I mean, these are just, you know, as, as you guys, as everyone on this call knows, it's, it's a moving. And so again, trying to, you know, there's a lot of resources, B and A, others have, you know, are trying to update it, you know, daily at the, at a minimum. So there, we all have resources to kind of keep on top of, of this. But it's, you know, even when the reciprocal tariffs got dropped or the initial, you know, 10% got dropped a couple of weeks ago, you know, that kind of, that, that really was, I don't want to say an ambush, but it was a very, you know, it was, it was a shock, right? And obviously, we saw that in the markets and there wasn't a business that wasn't really directly or indirectly affected by that. So, you know, this is a moving target, this, 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 this page. So, you know, just obviously, you know, keep abreast to this.
Yep. And this is why it's so different than what I lived through in Asia in 2018. The numbers came at us and it was volatile for about six weeks and then we stabilized. And then we can plan and we can move business activity and wrap strategy around it. Not the case with this round. With this round, again, we got to be ready for dynamic inputs and dynamic outputs. So some of the first things to consider is, and, and most people are, you know, of the 20 strategies, most, most heads are wrapped around, all right, how can I pass along a price increase to the end customer? That's one approach. We want to kind of set that in the context of what are some other things that we can be thinking about? Never has there been a more important time than to build a supplier relationship. So let's say that your supply base depended on China, for example. In what I've, what I see will, will happen and what happened in 2018 through 2020 with Wave One was, you know, Chinese suppliers, especially if you've worked with them for a very long time, are, are willing and able to work with you. They, they have just as much skin in this game as, as you do. And so they're, they're keenly interested in preserving that relationship. I, I saw a lot of relationships with suppliers in China where there wasn't even a price. You know, in the US, we're very much used to the world of pricing contracts, right? I wouldn't be surprised if many of you on the phone don't have contracts with Asian-based suppliers. Why? Because the relationship is more important than the contract. So in 18 to 20, we saw a lot of negotiation with suppliers to say, hey, all right, we're going to see a 24, 28, 30% tariff rate come in. Can that supplier absorb half? So also, are there strategies where that supplier, we can do a bigger volume buy? So go from pallet loads to more full container loads. Can we think about terms? Again, floating our cost of cash. So, you know, there's, there's things that we can do on the supply side of the equation. And in the short term, to, you know, again, if, if, and if it's a big supplier in China, I, I can't emphasize enough the importance of getting on a plane and going to see them and spending some time with them. And much more effective in a conversation about sharing the burden and sharing the exposure and risk of what we're seeing, especially in this dynamic environment. So, you know, when you think about, as, as we split this conversation, we've got what, what's on the left side of the chart, you know, working with our same product and, and, and thinking about strategies for reducing our exposure. On the right side of the chart is, as we, as we move into, again, bucket number three from the previous conversation about new product, new geographies and, and other changes that are going to take time. So it's, it's important to focus on, all right, what can we do in the short term? And certainly, a conversation, some good conversation with suppliers are going to be a big part of that equation. We're going to talk in a second about splitting invoices and breaking out costs as an important part of this equation. Likewise, there's, think, think about, in addition to the, the conversation with, with the customer and what percent of the increase that you're, as you coordinate with your sales team passing on to the customer, can the customer buy in bigger volume? Can we, again, think about terms? So some of the same things that we're doing on the supply side also consider on the demand side. And so Kyle, anything to add?
No, I mean, like you said, there's a, simple things are not, you know, just reconnecting our clients with their, making sure they're reconnecting with their current vendors and, and, you know, having those conversations, which I know they are, right? The sourcing departments are. But, you know, being very proactive in that and, and building in, you know, thinking about what other, what else, what if might happen or tariffs drop, right? Like having live conversations and, and that's become more important. And then you get to the more extreme end, that's obviously more, more time-consuming. So it's, uh, the people on every, a part of the value chain are non-stop busy, right? You know, we're obviously busy, but they are extremely, you know, just under the, you know, under a lot of pressure here, so.
They, they're, they have just as big a vested interest in keeping your businesses as you do. And to buy, and for you, for, for, for us on the, on the, on the, the buy side, and we need to buy time because if we're going to make some changes to the, to the right side of this chart with thinking about new geographies and new product, we do not want to tip off our current suppliers that we're initiating that type of activity. The world is a small place and news gets out fast. FPNA folks on the phone, we need you now more than ever to be modeling out again, dynamic inputs, dynamic outputs as, as the numbers change. Um, I want to talk, wait, let me flip back real quick. So on the top, um, right here, what can we do for splitting costs out of invoices? So I had just spoken with a man, a client of ours that has been doing business with the same European supplier for the last 30 years. And a good 50-plus million dollars in spend. And for years, the invoice that they received from the supplier is a mountain day due. And none of the costs were really broken out on this invoice. In the automotive world, we break down invoices into, and anybody in the automotive world knows what I'm talking about. We break out invoices into, here's the labor portion, here's the material portion, here's the testing portion, here's shipping, freight, insurance, et cetera. Why is that important? Because we're not tariffed on all of those service costs. So one of the, one of the other super key takeaways is, you know, again, for this, this client of ours that's spending 50-plus million with this European supplier, amount they do. And, and I suggested to them, hey, you know, it would be great. We, we got to start breaking down all of the costs in that invoice. So, you know, any, and, and there, there, there's a royalty and a distribution fee that can be pulled out, buying agent fees, freight and insurance, like I was suggesting. So in, in the med device space, if you have any testing that's going on at origin, so if you've got a factory overseas that's doing, you know, the FDA approval piece and the testing piece, those costs, we absolutely want to break out those costs on the invoice. Why? Because we're not, we don't, we, our understanding is we're not going to pay tariff on those costs, on those inspection and testing costs. Also, there are certain types of packaging for international shipments that may not be tariffed. Certain taxes, we don't have to get tariffed on. There's exchange rate premiums that a supplier might build in, is there bearing currency fluctuation and other risk costs? So I, if, if you're, to, one of the easiest and most low-hanging fruit, if you're not already thinking about it, is working, not just with your customs broker because they may already have a handle on some of these. But, you know, take a look at all 10 of these and making sure we're breaking out our costs.
Yeah. And I think to add on to that, I mean, something in, in the same kind of thought process as you look at the overall invoice is also like where it came from. And also like, was there a middleman or a, you know, are you buying from a distribution entity that is buying from a, you know, a third party as well? So kind of really understanding the, that aspect because that could lead into first sale planning where, you know, you, you can pay the, what the, you know, the manufacturing cost is if it's versus what you're getting charged by the distribution entity and, and breaking that out even further. So, you know, thinking about the current invoices, but also the, kind of like, where is it all coming from in, in the whole chain? You know, you might know, I'm getting buying it from this distribution agent in Asia or wherever, but got to go all the way, you got to look at the full chain and, and all of the underlying value and components of that invoice because there's definitely potential there that many businesses haven't explored. And that could be an, an easy item to potentially chip away or lower that, that doable or value.
Yeah, that's such a great point, Kyle. So to put that in my third grader language is, if, if the product takes three hops before it gets to you, our understanding is we're tariffed on, we can be tariffed on hop one. So those markup costs, we can start stripping out of our invoices. So Kyle, great point. All right. Um, this is a tiny one. I don't want to spend a ton of time here. But if, if you're not paying your customs payments by ACH, where there's an auto sweep body or bank account, consider doing that because your, your freight forwarding company is likely charging you a service charge to do that for you. So this is a way of avoiding a fixed fee or a percentage of however it is that they're handling it. And super easy, set up ACH payments so that you can avoid that fee. And the fee gets bigger naturally as the tariff gets bigger. Okay. Duty drawback. So this one is a bit more complex. It's, it's old. It's been around since the founding of our country and allows you to claim nearly all of certain duties, taxes and fees on certain items. So for example, if I bring in a component from Europe and I'm building a machine and I put that component in my machine and I export my machine, I'm able to pull the duty out of that, if, if I have my component costs listed, I don't have to pay duty on that component that went into my machine that I'm now later exporting. So there are a whole bunch of exceptions. So, you know, we, Kyle and I lean on trade attorneys to help us wade through this. But again, sniff test, if you look at your overall supply chain process and you're, you're starting, yes, we do have inbound goods that are going into assemblies and our finished goods are, you know, heading out across border. This may be something to look into. There's going to be a lot of documentation and compliance paperwork required. But again, you know, we want, our goal here is to add up the nickels and dimes into meaningful exposure reduction. There are a whole bunch of exceptions, depending on the type of materials and so forth. The other thing that we see run into as a, as a hurdle is ERP system. So we may need to think about how we are capturing our costs in ERP so that we can, again, provide the documentation required in order for, from a compliance perspective.
Yeah. And I think this one, this is a, you know, we see this a fair amount in the sense that, you know, again, everyone's trying to get creative and, you know, typical, typical examples, fact pattern we see is US distributor and they're buying from Europe and then they sell to, you know, throughout the Americas through the US. And, you know, the first instinct is like, well, let's quit, you know, routing that through the US. But that also, you know, I mean, in a lot of fact patterns, there's like, you know, there's, there's, you know, different transformation happening in the US and functions that are occurring. And so you're, you know, are you ready to take that away? And so the, this is the typical exception that you can, shouldn't, I mean, not necessarily affect you as much on that flow of, you know, from Europe or Asia into the US and then US into, you know, into Canada and other countries that, that you can still, you know, avoid or get some sort of the refund potentially on that. Or there's also in the same vein, free trade zones. But that's something that I think is, is we're seeing that people are trying to rearrange their flows. And in some cases, it does make sense, but this is the exception to kind of maybe counter that, that, that natural inclination to change the flows out of the US.
Yep. Yep. And at, and in this, in this case, it's at the component level. We're going to, in a couple of slides, we're going to talk about at the finished goods level. So, and when we get a little bit more into tariff engineering. So, but duty drawback, definitely, if you've got a complex assembly, something we might want to take a look at. Okay. And Kyle, I am turning it over to you to talk about transfer pricing.
Yeah, for sure. So, you know, I think one of the things that we, you know, that many of you maybe struggle with is where you can get involved or, you know, this is one that I think some of you may have with, you know, capabilities or within your, within your firm that you may already be doing. But, you know, transfer pricing is one of the, you know, the biggest items to potentially manage the tariffs. And just for those of you that may not know what transfer pricing is, is basically, it's just, when you have related parties, they need to have arms length. You know, that's, that's not just a, it's generally, you see that on an international, you know, context of foreign parent in Europe that sells to the US distribution hub. And that purchase from what the US distributor buys from Europe is to be an arms length, right? And that's the transfer pricing. Now, there's always ranges within transfer pricing, right? It's not a hard and fast, it has to be 5%, right? It's a, what are the functions the US is doing and, and what are the typical other third-party, you know, charge for that activity? So that, this is one of those things because like, again, what is that value that you are getting charged on your COGS or the related party transaction? That is going to probably be on your customs invoice, right? And so that is why transfer pricing is very critical in the related party context. So, um, so, you know, you know, this is a, is a great opportunity, also manage cash flow. We, you know, we've historically really looked at transfer pricing to manage cash tax and, and, you know, rate, you know, arbitrage between different jurisdictions and, and stuff like that. But now it becomes even more of an opportunity or a, a critical risk assessment of, because of the customs valuation as well. So the other thing is, is you want to do this now. You don't want to wait. If you are going to change the transfer pricing to a different end of the range, you want to do it now because when you think about the, the customs and border patrol, the CVP, the, you know, when they look at invoices, if you, you could potentially go for a refund. If you change your pricing methodology on what you are getting charged on COGS from your related party distributor, manufacturer, um, you know, you, you potentially could go get a refund if you change that. Let's just say I was charged 100 and I think, well, no, I should have been, I should have only been charged 90, right? Now, $9 versus the $10, the 10% customs rate, I want to get that dollar refund. Well, to go back and get a refund, refund from CBP is very, it's, they're very difficult. You got to submit tax returns, you got to submit, you know, transfer pricing reports. There's a lot more that goes into it. And so like, if you can do it on a go-forward basis and do it now, right? Evaluate this now is important because you want to avoid those conversations or trying to get that refund or having the audits that may come from the CVP. And again, I also think, I've seen this recently with larger organizations in immigration. You know, I think with the, you know, there's a lot more, just with the current administration that we have, there's a lot more potential of sharing of information. of sharing of information, right, between different government agencies, right? Whether it's ICE and IRS or IRS and and customs, right? There's, you know, historically, there may not have been a lot of sharing of that, the, you know, the the relevant information, right? For like immigration, for example, of these people moving and what what taxes are they filing? But, you know, I think that there is a lot of concern in the, you know, or, you know, what, I don't know if you want to view it as concern, but just there is a potential of more transparency and and sharing of information between, you know, intergovernmental agencies. And so that also then goes into is, you know, would customs be a lot more sharing with the IRS? I mean, I, you know, that's a TBD, but like, that that's a bigger trend that we're seeing that organizations are just trying to understand and make sure that we have consistent data as we think about you taking a position on a tax return that may be contrary to what the customs, you know, value is. That could be something that could be a risk if 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 they don't kind of line up with each other. So we'll go to maybe a simple example on the next slide. I think, um, you know, I, uh, one of the things that this is just kind of, again, there's a lot that goes into this. But we wanted to just illustrate an example of how, you know, you know, working within the range of a of a arms length transfer price. Here we we've got, um, you know, uh, the the customers obviously still company, this doesn't take in the fact that company B is selling, you know, to third parties. You know, we have not like changed that pricing. Obviously, there's that whole end of the the supply chain of them potentially passing some costs on to, you know, the, you know, overall tariffs on to their customers. But we we wanted to show a quick example of, you know, changing the intercompany charges that company A, the manufacturer charges the related company B. And, you know, in this example, just lowering here in this example, the, you know, the the transaction price by 50, you know, can potentially lead to not just a low, obviously a lower customs duty. But it also in the in this set of facts, um, could could also, you know, benefit from a cash tax answer as well. So it it's one of those things that you could add a lot of value potentially to your client. You know, we we see far too often where the US distributor is is at the low end of any kind of arms length, third party transfer price. Meaning they are getting charged way too much by their their foreign equivalent or their foreign manufacturing, brother sister or parent. And so really taking a harder look of like, well, is that the right, you know, uh, it it, why am I at the lower end and is it, is it, you know, why, maybe I should be at the higher end, right? Not only is there potentially a a customs benefit possibly, but also a benefit from a cash tax perspective. I mean, I think US tax rates, I mean, after you layer in states, right? You know, it's a blended, you know, whatever, 25, 26%. But a lot of the European countries are, you know, we're talking 35. So, you know, that sometimes the struggle is, is that the 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 you also have to think about the the other jurisdictions, tax authorities and changing that the now that that they may have a lower profit. So I just, you know, I we we layer this example out there just as this is something that that, you know, many CPAs, uh, you know, either practice or very much involved with. And so it it's an area that I think, you know, you could definitely, you know, work with your clients as a as maybe a near term easier solution potentially than some of the more complex ones that we kind of outlined, you know, in the in that in that spectrum. So, um, so I just wanted to share this example. But there's a lot more complexities here, but I just wanted to show this example.
And and Kyle, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but we can still, like the top 10 we showed earlier of all those costs, we should be backing out of invoices. That still applies here, right?
Yes, yeah, for sure. Um, you know, there's, there's a lot that goes into, uh, what, you know, your related party is charging you. And so you still go through that whole exercise. I mean, you know, you could have management fees baked into here and other things that that no, you you got to get that off of your invoice or, you know, or break that invoice out or separately invoice for that as well. And and, um, but yeah, that's definitely still very much relevant in this sense.
Yep. Great, thanks. All right, so, um, comment a little bit on tariff engineering. So if you remember back to that chart about, you know, the easy button, you know, stuff we can do on the accounting side of the equation, some immediate activities and and what we can do now. Tariff engineering falls more in that middle, you know, that medium term, longer term strategy discussion that, um, you know, we can think about. And we're going to have to get engineering operations involved to think more strategically about, hey, are there changes that could potentially happen with the product that would put us in a different tariff category? This is a team sport. So not just with accounting and operations together, but also we definitely would recommend legal input to make sure that we've got a good trade attorney on our team. Um, and weighing in with, you know, what's what's possible. So also from a compliance standpoint, we also have our documentation in order. So what this means is, um, and there was a really famous example in 2015 when Converse switched. And I don't know if anybody bought these, but they're they're sports shoes from a rubber bottom to a fuzzy bottom. Well, that allowed them to switch up from a 20% tariff rate to a 6% tariff rate because now it's a slipper. It's not a shoe. I don't know how safe it is on the gym floor, but, um, that was in essence, you know, why the strategy happened. So in practical terms, I had a client in 18 that had a an all aluminum product that what they did is they switched up, it was a, it was a tool, you know, consumer product. And they switched up this this tool to instead of a total aluminum product, which was at, because of 232, it is at a high rate. We did aluminum with a plastic overlay. And so as a result, we reduce the aluminum content by two thirds. And we we were then in a very different tariff category. Why? Because aluminum's weighed and then tariffed on that weight. So, um, there's, there's things to consider about, you know, adjusting and altering and change. So keeping the product essentially the same. But are there engineering considerations for changing material component and content that will put us in a different category? Now, when we do that, um, we, there's, there's other, there's other strategies as well. Another approach is to, instead of doing all of our assembly in another geography, are there opportunities to bring in the pieces and parts and doing the assembly closer to markets that we're serving? Um, why? Because the HTS codes can change. So the HTS code, for example, on the ink in a toner cartridge is one code. The cartridge itself is a different code. But if I ship the finished good, then I'm going to be charged at a higher rate of a finished good assembly. So are there opportunities for us to bring in these components and do assembly closer to market? Um, that would likely result in in an HTS code change. Again, I would recommend legal input here, but like, and I'll use Kyle's. It is, I love the accounting terminology that that changes the fact pattern. And so we need to be ready to document it and defend it. So, um, when anytime we make HTS codes, you know, that's something that customs and border patrol is going to scrutinize very, very carefully. So but those, those are options again, if we look in our law, our medium and our longer term strategy is to be thinking differently about the product itself. Kyle, any?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, while we're on this HTS code thing is that we're also seeing this just in the state in, you know, the sales and use tax aspect as well, like, because, you know, each state, you know, taxes differently. And and again, what we've been seeing as well is that this tariff can, you know, in some states, it, the value can include the tariff that you are charged or the cost that you you were charged. In other states, it's not. So I mean, while you're you're looking at these codes, that also kind of brings it category of like, where does this fit within? You know, the sales tax, uh, is as taxable in that state or not? Because, you know, every stat, you know, state has exceptions. And and so you're kind of looking at the same categories at the same time. And I I know, you know, probably all of you on this call have been involved in some state and local tax aspects. Or have, you know, colleagues within your firm. But that's another area that, you know, we, you know, you don't want to be overcharging or undercharging on on sales and use tax as well. So we've seen just yesterday, I had, you know, I was dealing with one where they they're looking at these in tandem because it's you're looking at the, they don't obviously line up, but it's the same time you're looking at the what categories are we putting this in for for the, you know, customs and the sales tax aspect too.
That's such a great point, Kyle. And there are certain states, for example, that if the supplier isn't set up to pay the state tax, then the importer is responsible for it. So there's, and and as these numbers get bigger, it's definitely something to keep in mind.
Yep.
Um, we've, I want to breeze through these last couples to allow you all plenty of time for questions. But, um, again, as we think about, you know, the, the, you know, the the three buckets, right? What can I do immediately, medium term, long term? Um, in the medium term bucket, um, there's opportunities to think about how goods are moved as as we move there. There's bonded warehouses in free trade zones, which are more of a cash, less, less of a tariff reduction opportunity, but more of a cash flow opportunity. So that if I move goods into a market close to where I'm going to sell them, I can put them in these bond warehouses or free trade zones. And I'm not taxed until I remove them into market to sell. So there's there's subtle differences between the two. But I I just wanted to bring this to your attention because, you know, for, as the numbers get bigger, if we're looking for cash flow conservation techniques, this is one. Um, so if you, and there's things that you can do in these warehouses in certain cases. So you can do some kitting and packaging and and light assembly work without and and kind of delaying that cash arbitrage on when that tax would be due. So I could do a whole hour long presentation on just this topic. But, um, whole variety of clients that have been doing this for a long time um, in order to, you know, again, look at timing on payment. All right. Last but not least, kind of wrap up with this one. As, you know, we've seen in very recent news headline, once the 90 day pause went into effect on retaliatory tariff, hot on its heels came a couple of key exceptions for companies that had applied for relief successfully. And I I'm not sure exactly how long that will stick, but they said, hey, you know, we want to comply, but we're going to need more time. And because we've, we've got to do a lot of work in bucket two and bucket three, medium and long term, supply chain reengineering. And so these companies were primarily laptops, phones, electronics, this sort of thing. They've success, so about of the 600 billion we spent with China, about 167 billion falls into this bucket. It's a pretty good chunk. Um, so I get asked often, Kyle, you know, what should I be thinking about a relief process? And can we even be successful in doing that? I don't know. But what I can tell you is, looking at history as as our guide, um, in 2018 to 20, when the first wave of tariffs hit and most of those were on China, um, the the government, US government received about 53,000 requests and about 13% were granted. Um, I I wasn't, I, as I was digging into this a little bit, a lot of mid-market companies. So think, and and everybody has a little bit different definition of mid-market, but think, you know, 500 million and well below were successful. Um, but why? Because larger companies have more levers to pull. They've already diversified their supply chain. If they're not buying from their factory in China, they can go buy from their factory in Malaysia. But mid-market may be more dependent on one supplier, right? And the 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 exclusions were often granted for companies that can only source from one factory and they can't really buy those parts anywhere else. And the successful categories were for the most part with machinery, electric equipment, mechanical appliances. And stuff that we just don't have diversified sourcing strategies for those items. They're only made in highly automated plants in China. And so the the exclusion process, again, using history as our guide, was slow. The the average, by the time you filed and you waited for a response, could be a year. So you got to plan for the cash flow impact of that while you're waiting. And you've got what a 10 to 50% chance of winning. So I I did see if several successful examples where associations would get their membership together and go and, you know, spread that spend of lobbyists and work together as several companies would would work in a more of a class action style filing with the government and were able to get grants. Once you you do get an exclusion, that will apply to all your competitors as well. So if you go alone and you win it, it's going to apply to everybody in that whole HTS category.
Yeah, and I think one of the hot topics right now is where, you know, rare earth, you know, minerals and and that maybe, maybe this could be an avenue, right? Where, you know, China has a monopoly or a big chunk of that market or, and, you know, and maybe that could be, again, we're just speculating here. But, um, maybe that could fit in this relief process that the administration should make carve out or something. But, uh, you know, TBD, I guess.
Yeah, so it's not impossible. It's just slow and a little tech consuming. So, okay, um, I'm going to wrap it up. And so that we can quickly get to a few questions. But, you know, really, how do you, how do you go about this? So as you're thinking about strategy for your company, um, two steps, you know, one is assessing the impact, which I'm sure everyone is extremely busy doing at this time. Um, building a roadmap, breaking it down into these three buckets. What can I do immediately? Good accounting hygiene, good tariff hygiene. Um, and then with our current footprint and our reimagined footprint. And then really people processing systems as we implement these we need, we need models, FPNA folks with dynamic inputs and dynamic outputs to get ready for what happens after our 90 day pause. So we need, we need agility now more than others. It's what makes this environment so much different than what we saw in 18. I'm ready for questions. If you like what you heard today, we covered about 10 of the 20. Um, we've got a three part webinar series coming up. We're going to go into depth on all 20. Um, so that if you want to go ahead, scan the QR code here, it'll, it'll show you what topics will be covered in each of the three. And so you can sign up for what might be of interest to you. So with that, April, back over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer and and Kyle. Very informative. Do we have questions? I know it was a lot, a lot to take in. Certainly, um, you know, if you have questions, I think at this time, we don't need to use the chat. Just, um, if you could identify yourself and ask your question. Wow. No one, huh? Boy.
Did, did, is there anyone on the line that, um, what did we miss? You know, in terms of strategy, are there things that you've, you're you're implementing, maybe working with a trade law team? Um, are there key things that you you are exploring that we didn't have time to cover here that you're um, currently looking at in terms of your strategic direction? And welcome some feedback as well.
I think everyone ran away, ran away screaming, huh? Well, they, um, we are going to provide you, oh, well, actually, you have Jennifer and Kyle's contact information here. Um, if you think of questions, you know, some may want to ask questions afterwards. Maybe privately. So, um, please feel free to to reach out to Jennifer and Kyle. We, um, you have fulfilled your 50 minute CPE. And, um, thank you all for being here. Again, like Jennifer said too, happy day after tax day. Congratulations to those of you who got through. And thank you again, Jennifer, Kyle, for for being here, especially such short notice too. We really appreciate the information.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. I mean, this is probably the biggest thing we've seen in business world in in, uh, in decades. I mean, the the impact, you know, right? in decades. I mean, the the impact, you know, right? You know, the worldwide tariffs. So we're here to just shoot us any questions you have or concerns that, you know, um, you you have, and we're appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for hosting, April.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Bye.